Two thirty ish, four twenty eight, we will begin this special meeting of Lake County Board of County Commissioners. Thanks everyone for attending. First on the agenda today, we have the consideration of the grant for the Prop one, two, three. Yeah. Sorry, I was flying blind on that.
So before we get started, I want to introduce Pete Scales. Pete is working with our Borough Planner to help us with Massey for the second lottery, the upcoming lottery. Michael is joining us remotely so as to continue working virtually for us at his computer.
Sorry, Commissioner Bullock.
He's sorry.
Cool, okay. And for everyone in the room, Commissioner Bullock has just joined us remotely. Sure, we're all knowing that. Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Jackie.
No, I'm just pretty much done. So I'm going to turn it over to Michael.
Yeah, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
And I let whoever has control of the screen kind of scroll through the staff report and maybe zoom in on some numbers as needed. But at the last meeting, we presented to the BOCC the option of applying for Proposition 123, which would supply nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars for fourteen of the twenty-four for targeted AMIs under a hundred percent. That application is due May first. And we discussed some of the ins and outs about of that at the last meeting. And it was requested, which is, which was a very good request, was that we come back really kind of giving a timeline of how all of this happened and the expenditures to date. So what I tried to do was systematically break down the different funding that went into this. The biggest thing being that this has gone through now three years of different budget cycles. So each time we hit a year, the county has re-adopted a budget. But we originally applied and started this whole thing in 2022 when we did an initial site analysis and identified the school district site, the possibility for infill development with some needed infrastructure costs. When we actually originally applied, the hospital district site was not actually one of the, one of the sites. So the additional remediation work and remediation work on that site, as well as the tap fees for that site, were not in the original budget. Jackie was able to go out and get a supplemental award, as you'll see on here, for three hundred thousand dollars, which was able to be leveraged, as well as Jackie, again, being amazing, was able to also submit an appraisal and use the county's land purchase or land exchange with the hospital district as a match for the required match. At that time, when we originally did this project, the city contributed four hundred thousand and the county two hundred towards the original match. But what Jackie's efforts in getting the land was able to accomplish was basically to free up that six hundred thousand that has been rolled over into the 2025 budget. So if you scroll down a little bit, to date, the big thing about that grant, the incentive grant, and probably the biggest difficulty, so going into the, if you scroll down just a little bit further, so everyone can see the total right there, perfect. So the second, the second table shows the I H O I money that was spent as of April first, 2025. This grant through DOLA was a ARPA award. It was federal funding that got changed to state funding, but it had a deadline of April first to close out the grant. So one of the unfortunate things, I think I would say, of having that, not that getting this money was unfortunate, but the difficult thing was that we had to wrap up the grant and submit our final budget report prior to the snowmelt thing this year and doing a couple of things that are still left on site that will be on the, on the but to date, we were able to close up the grant, spend all the grant funds, the one point, we'll call it one point six, one five, nine, seven, the total spent. And that had a, from the original amount, had a leftover amount of seven eighty-nine. Again, it's hard to track these numbers between budget years. So what I'm trying to do is just show the expenditures of funds from the original budget to date, till to date. So since then, the remaining costs to be completed, so this is the stuff, so if you scroll down a little bit further, this is the, as the site exists today and what's left to do because of the snowfall and not being able to continue to grant work after April first. So what still remains out there, the sand district came back after the fact, after they, after they did the final inspection and told us that, I'll just kind of say it like it was, surprise, we also wanted us to replace the existing main where we tied in. That was an unexpected cost and they kind of tagged that on to the end of our project. So we have a bid and that's ready to rule and be completed by the existing contractor so that we can get acceptance from the sand district on the third dish, on the third street site. There is a, there's budget in the Sixth Street overlay road patch. We don't anticipate that Third Street's going to be cut. We were able to get this, the water main and sewer main extensions are on the north side of the road. There's a retain, retained earthwork funding from the remediation contractor of eight thousand dollars. We have ten thousand dollars in there for the environmental certification. That's, that's for the environmental consultant who did the soils management study to give us an all clear once the final cap is done. The difficulty, just to explain this real quick, because I think it's, it's something that you'll see as we proceed with contracting with Oakwood. To complete the environmental work, we actually have to install a cap on the site. You can't install a cap until you dig the foundations. If you were to install the cap now and then dig through the cap to put foundations in, you would violate the, basically the remediation work and the final, the final work and you'd have to retest all the soil. So that final grade, once it's placed on site after the foundations are done, is when we'll get that environmental certification. The survey costs that you see here are for the creation of townhome plaits. Obviously, those can't be done until we start constructing duplexes. We are paying the actual permit fees for the project. That's because you use Comp Shota as your third-party inspector, so we will be covering that cost. And then we still have some drainage engineering to be completed as we, as we proceed and some onsite surveying from Marson, as well as the seventy thousand dollars scope of services that was recently awarded. So those are the onsite improvements that are still out there that we know about going into this year. And then you'll see on here, the other two things, the other two line items that exist are the phase one lottery buydown for, this is the first seventeen buyers, as well as what we've been talking about, which is the two-unit purchase, which would only occur in the event that we had folks drop off from, under, that were on a contract and also that we didn't have anyone in the back in the, on the waiting list that wanted to buy those units. And then the final thing you'll see on here is a contingency. What's important about that contingency number is we get down to the Prop one, two, three is that number is the difference of the four hundred and some plus that one fifty make up the, the Prop one, two, three commitment. As we scroll down here now, then I'll jump into, so I'll, actually, why do I stop for a second? And ask, are there any questions around what has transpired to date with the I H O I DOLA grant? And then I'll get into the Prop one, two, three stuff. Sorry, that's a lot.
Okay. Um, Michael, the money that we didn't spend from the original grant budget, is that grant money then that we've lost opportunity to use since we didn't use it by?
No, we, we, we used up the entire grant. So actually, what happened was that the, like, actual cash, the six hundred cash from the city and county, basically was never spent.
Got it. Okay, okay, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so we've closed out, Jackie submitted the final report and we've gotten, we're getting a reimbursement of that two ninety-seven amount because we had been, that, that gets held aside and as a retainer by the state until you close your grant. So there'll be, Jackie, correct me if I'm wrong, but there'll be a reimbursement coming from the state still because you just submitted the final grant request, right? Okay. So that's, that's the I H O I grant. So where we're at today, so if you scroll down to the pricing. So we, sorry, go up, sorry. Right there, that's the pricing. So where we're at today, we have the opportunity to go after an additional nine eighty from the state through Proposition 123. Proposition 123 is a statewide revolving affordable housing fund that you have to opt into, which the county did back in two thousand, I want to say twenty-three. Is that correct?
I don't know if it was twenty-two or twenty-three, but yeah.
It was, I think it was twenty-three, but what that does is it allows us to apply for units under a hundred percent AMI gap financing of up to seventy thousand a unit. So if you look, there's, if you look at the top set of numbers, that is just our anticipated housing costs. So that, so the Albert at three thirty-three, and then you'll see next to it, there's a pretty significant contingency of three hundred and fifteen thousand, so that adds about thirteen. Play the exact amount because I have my spreadsheet open. It adds thirteen, one twenty-seven a unit to each of these units. So you can see that the Oakwood Sales Place Plus contingency is our cost to sell. With the Prop one, two, three funding, we'll be able to discount fourteen of those units to buy seventy thousand dollars, which will get them into the strike zone for our buyers under a hundred percent AMI. So we'll still have four units of the Hope at three sixty-three and six Shermans at three sixty-six for buyers that are above a hundred percent AMI. But the fourteen buyers below, the Alberts, will be offered to them at two seventy-six and two ninety-seven for the Shermans. There'll be no hopes at the, at the hundred percent AMI pricing. So what that, what we're applying for today is that gap of gap financing for those hundred percent AMI buyers of ninety, nine hundred and eighty thousand. Jackie, correct me if I'm wrong, but currently today, as it stands, the lottery, there's twelve buyers that are, that are already qualified for this pricing.
Yes.
So we'll have two additional units in the next lottery, at least, that will be able to offer those price points at, for those. And then the additional units would probably fall into the, into the higher price point. So where we're at today, so if you look at your resolution that you'll be taking action on, and I apologize because the state has a, has a very dense calculus spreadsheet that all, every number of the project goes into. So it's all the infill sites, it, it's the surveying, engineering, it's permit fees, every, every penny that ever went into the project into, including contingencies. And it spits out what's required by the county as far as its match for this project. The required match from the state, six oh four. So there's, it does, you'll look at these numbers, if you scroll down a little bit, the numbers don't, you don't see here a six oh four number of where, where I'm saying this is what the county is liable for. So the reason you're not seeing that is two, one, the project direct funds of four, four, four seventy-two. Those are the funds of all that work that I described that has to occur this year. That is the, that, that is the, that's the entirety of that, which is really in that, in the DOLA spreadsheet is a majority of the required match by the county. The county is also putting in a hundred and fifty thousand dollar contingency. So if you were to add one, if you were to add four seventy-two plus the one fifty contingency, you would get that six hundred number. We don't need to specifically put another hundred and fifty into the pot because the state's going to recognize the six fifty in the contract with Oakwood and the half a million with Oakwood. So you guys are well above the required match that the county's committing to the project by the state. Because again, there's a, there's a fairly significant contingency in the budget. There's, but developer has three seventeen, I believe, and the county has a hundred and fifty. So long story short is, the reason the numbers don't match perfectly up to the resolution to this budget is that we're not required to put another hundred and fifty thousand into the general fund direct, you know, your project direct funds because the, the state's going to allow us to use the six fifty and the half a million to be our required match for Prop one, two, three. So, last thing and then I'll take questions. So I want to, if you, if you were to look at worst case scenario, which I was asked to bring forward, if, in the event that we did not get Prop one, two, three funding and we had attrition in buyers, the total all-in for the county would be one point six. But that would require us not getting the, not getting the funding as well as having to buy two units because we had buyers fall out off, off the back. What I will say is that what we've heard from Oakwood is that, and what we're gearing up to do and why Pete's in the room today, we're about to, you'll, if we move forward today, we'll be bringing the new lottery guidelines and kicking that off. Our hope is to have the application, and I don't have exact dates right now, but the second to the last week and week of June will be the due date for applicants for the second lottery. And what Oakwood wants to see is a pretty strong showing on the second lottery round before we, before they complete the final order on boxes. If we have a real pathetic showing, I think we'll be coming back in front of the BOCC to try to mitigate any of that risk around that six fifty to ensure that we're not doing something that, you know, I'm checking in before we spend those money. But worst case scenario, this is the totality of what is included in the budget. Again, that includes you, the county, having to make up if we're unsuccessful on the Prop one, two, three grant. And Jackie, do you maybe want to share, because I don't want to say, because I don't want to jinx us, but do you want to share with the state guidance we got back from our meeting when we did our final review?
Yes, I think that we're incredibly competitive. It's a very onerous application. They had three times the dollars that they have to give out in their initial letter of intent indicate that these folks want to apply for this funding. But they have said that, that typically people drop off because the application is horrific. The spreadsheet that Michael was talking about is ridiculous. There's fourteen pages of, you know, documents and things that they need, and I think that folks just don't do it. The letter of intent that we sent was simply a one-page letter indicating that we had an interest in applying. So I think that certainly the state has backed the project and is supportive of the project and is very aware of the project. And I think they want to see it be successful. So I, I feel confident that our application is good. I also think that we have your support, so I mean, we, we don't know what else is coming in door, but I think that we look great.
Well, that's good news.
When we, if, if we have to buy the two, if we have to buy two units and that contingency goes away, we'd still be selling those units again and getting the contingency back. It's just like, for the short term, we would be shelling out that money. But we'd be shelling it out for an asset that we could turn around.
Correct, and you'd also be able to, if they weren't, if there was no buyers, you'd also be allowed to rent them. So you'd be rental income while you, while you market those units. So it's not like they just sit there and decay, correct? So they're, they are, they are an asset, not a liability at the end of the day.
Wasn't there potential that Oakwood, what was Oakwood's engagement in that, though, that they would potentially, they would potentially be getting the income from rental if we didn't buy them?
So that would be above and beyond the two units.
Okay, okay, that would be the other.
So if they built twenty-four units and we didn't sell some units, then they would be able to.
Our contingency is only for two of them and then they would be, and we would be able to keep the rental money that we got off of them, sell them, get our money back, and they would be on the hook for the rest. Yes, cool, thank you. I understand it after this third time being explained, so thank you.
Yeah, and I think, I'll, I'll be real blunt, it was Jackie and I, I, I actually felt really guilty because I made Jackie work to probably six thirty on Friday night. But we went through the entire, we reran the entire expenditure list from the DOLA grant and we rematched up all of our, you know, all the invoicing. And it was worth, it was worth getting this down to making sure we knew where every dollar had gone in and out the door and where exactly we sat today. So I apologize again for the late memo, but it was, I mean, it was something we have to do regardless because it's taxpayer dollars and be responsible for every penny. But it was also good to make sure that we know exactly where things stand on, on all these costs.
Great.
Michael, how you doing, man? Hey, when is, when's the lottery, the second lottery going to be held?
So that's a great question. Jennifer Komod, I, I have, I contract, subcontract out with her to assist because the state actually requires a certification for somebody, you have to actually have a special certification to review applications and, and check it, check their AMI. So the state requires us to have a, basically, I don't want, it's, I don't want to say license because that's not the right word, certified person. So Jennifer is just getting back to town today. But what we have discussed is that on May sixth, we will have lottery guidelines for your consideration to adopt. We'll open up, apply the application on May twelfth for the second lottery. We need to have, the, the critical day for Oakwood and our team is probably June twentieth is the application deadline for the actual submittal of applications. What Oakwood wants to see is that at least enough applicants have applied to build all of the units, right? So we say we have seven units left over, they want to, they want to make sure there's buyers there for those other units before they order the boxes. But if we have a healthy applicant pool on the twentieth, there, there's a delay that we have in that Jennifer needs and, and Pete will need to go and get everybody's information. And if somebody's missing something, we give them a week to, to rectify their application. We don't want to just say, oh, you're missing this information, tough luck, you didn't miss the lottery this time, this year. So we have, and then we also build in there an appeal period in which, when we notify somebody that their application was being not qualified, that they could actually appeal that, that decision. So we would probably be looking at building in the review time, sending out the letters after the twentieth. We're looking at either the week of July seventh or July fourteenth as the actual lottery day. Just to give that, that time in, in between when they submit and what we need to do to make sure that they, they, they're certified under the AMIs.
Okay, cool. So we're looking at the middle of summer and then what about the grant award date?
So we would go to the State Housing Board. They haven't announced the official day of that yet, but the anticipated week is July seventh is when this, we could be going in front of the State Housing Board. We will know whether we are recommended to go in front of the State Housing Board prior to that. Because what they do is they send a notification to Jackie and myself to come and present the, the application to the State Housing Board.
Okay. And then the deadline for ordering the boxes is shortly thereafter, I assume?
It's July first.
July first.
First. So we have to order boxes to get the pricing from the factory before we know we have, before we fully know we have an award. Bonavilla, I, so what has transpired is that Oakwood's team went to Nebraska and we were told May first was the, we were going to see a price increase. The CEO of Oakwood Homes went to Nebraska and got, get that pricing guaranteed to July. So, but they, they basically told him after July first, there's no way. So he got, he, he was able to get us a few more months for all of this. So I think what I would anticipate that we would be doing is coming back to the BOCC for a pretty important update in your second meeting in June to let you know how things stand before we would probably pull the trigger and make that final jump off the, off the ledge into, into everything, but.
Okay, man. Roll the dice.
Well, we know we want to go for Prop one, two, three, so let's get that resolution adopted.
Can I just ask one more question? Is it possible that Oakwood Homes will not purchase the other six, six homes? Because I thought that was pretty sure that they would.
I think the, their response on that is that they would want to, so that, so I don't think it's guaranteed. I think if there's no applicants for the second lottery, I think we're going to be coming back to the BOCC to have a conversation. Pete, do you want to give a quick update on the total, though, on what we've seen even without doing any marketing in the last three or four weeks?
Right.
Or, or at all, really.
Yeah, so since, well, I added another name to the list today, and these are folks that are registered on the website. Register for information, for more information.
Yeah.
And we hit two hundred the other day and now we're at two oh one. So excluding the seventeen people that had applied for that first lottery, we have a hundred and eighty-five right now, and that list is growing that we're going to reach out to with phone calls and emails, you know, directly to them and kind of walk them. That's why I've been hired to kind of help urge people to apply, walk them through the application process and then into the lottery.
Awesome, okay.
And.
So we're going to try to fill, we're going to do a weekend to make sure it's not just a passive lottery.
Right.
That's awesome.
And we're going to have an upgraded, you know, a new and improved website with Oakwood's help. They've hired a marketing team, another separate marketing agency, right, an advertising agency to, to work on that. So you'll see real great changes, I think, with that soon. With new signage and stuff like that, I think we're going to have, see that ball start rolling again with more people interested, so. I have, well, I don't want to put the cart before the horse, but there's a lot of work that needs, still needs to be done, but I think we've got a great head start with that giant business people.
Amazing, thank you. Okay, I can move.
If you do a motion to.
And when you do your motion, sorry, if you wouldn't mind including the, the match amount in your motion, just for the record, so that we can show that to DOLA.
Which match amount, this?
It's six oh four, it's in the staff report, it's, I mean, one second. Six oh four, five, two, zero.
Six oh four, five, two, okay, yeah. I'll just try it and if I mess up, we'll just redo it. Okay, I move to adopt Resolution 2025 dash fifteen, a resolution supporting the application for Proposition 123 grant funding for the completion of the Housing at Ten Two project. Specifically noting our grant match of six hundred and four thousand, five hundred, twenty dollars.
I'll second the motion.
All right, two of vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All righty. Here we go, agenda item number one, out of the way there. Moving on, agenda item number two, discussion and consideration of the adoption of Resolution 2025 dash eighteen, a resolution conferring signature authority and delegating signature authority for the Prop position one, two, three grant funding for the completion of the housing at. For the Prop position one, two, three grant funding for the completion of the Housing at Ten Thousand Two Hundred project. Led by Jackie Wallahan, Housing Program Manager and Michael Yerman.
So this is a requirement of the application, and so um you are being named as the signer. Um on the application and.
Enter and loop canvas now.
This is the secondary.
Right.
Yeah. Cool.
Okay.
Um, can you get a motion?
I move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighteen. A resolution conferring signature authority and delegating signatory authority for proposition one, two, three grant funding. For the completion of the Housing at Ten Two project.
I'll second the motion.
To a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Twenty twenty-five dash eighteen is adopted?
Yes.
All right. Well, anything else we need to wrap up here? Is that it? Everybody good? Okay, uh it's three oh two P M. We will conclude this special meeting of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Chair.